Call me in order, please join me in the hall. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask her.
Let's power heads for prayer. Gracious and merciful Lord, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. Thank you for your abundant blessings and for life itself. Thank you for health and for healing. Thank you for providing our daily bread and all that we need from day to day. Thank you for friends and family. Thank you for our community and those willing to serve as leaders in our community. Thank you for the ability to be involved in productive work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the many freedoms we enjoy. Thank you for loving us even when we are unlovable. We pray now for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. Give them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Give them a keen thirst for justice and confidence in what is good and fitting. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Give them personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We pray that you will be with this council as they consider the agenda for this evening. Guide them to know what will be pleasing to you and what will benefit those who live and work in and around our Linsburg community. We pray in the name of Jesus.
Public input tonight? Anybody here for public input? Seeing none, amendments to the agenda, council members, any amendments to the agenda as created? Hearing none, moving on to the mayor's report. Last weekend, rain, rain, rain. Sorry, lots of rain last weekend, but the Lindbergh and Blue Committee pushed through and it was a great time downtown and I really appreciate their efforts. Even the weather can't keep them down and then they moved it inside and I think had a great weekend. I'm sure it was good for sales or anything downtown. I haven't been able to talk to any merchants and that, but definitely the people over there had a good time and really appreciate it.
Well, it looked like it was a layer for you guys.
Word for is open. I've had a couple of inquiries through email. I'm asking the public and asking council members or anybody, if you have names or individuals that you would like for me to talk to, I'd like to get that wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. So anybody interested in a word for council position, please pass that along. How many of you get Tripling's role magazine? You probably all seen this already anyway. You get that? I was browsing through here looking where I was going to go traveling next and lo and behold, I'm going to Granada Heights. I thought it was very interesting. I had not seen that. So again, you probably all knew it was in there, but I was excited to see that end up in the magazine there. The other item I have are the citizens committee, council members. Jury has done a great job color coding the vacant positions, who's willing to continue in their position and who might be looking to get off. So this is going to be available on Dropbox tomorrow. The updated version of where we're at, we are looking for several areas. Citizens of the community, if you wish to join us on Recreation Advisory, Linsburg County Library Board, whatever it might be, please bring those recommendations to City Hall. Getting involved in your local community government is a great place to go and a good place to start, so.
What would be the best way for citizens to access that?
They can access by actually now the, there's a forum. There's a forum where they might express their interest in what they might be willing to join, you know, the different committees that are out there. And are the committees listed for them anywhere?
I believe so.
Okay. So this information, I don't know if it's proprietary, but it's also this address and vote number stuff that's really counseled access through Dropbox.
Thank you.
Is what that's going to be. So please let me know those so we can make those appointments next time. Consent agenda, what is your desire?
Motion to adopt.
Same, the move and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Role call, please.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carry. Under item seven, appointments. Ken? Chief?
There's only one this town, so.
Uh, sir, we call you Tim again. Chief.
Sherry Jerome is already certified EMT, would like to join our service and serve with our ambulance. And I'm asking for your approval to have her placed onto our service.
What is your desire, council?
Motion to approve.
Been moved, is there a second? Second. Been moved and seconded to approve Sherry Jerome to join the Linsburg ambulance service. Any discussion?
She does not this evening?
She does not. Will you stand in at the photo?
I, I will stand.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carry, please welcome her for us, chief, and I appreciate her desire to be on EMS and serve the community. Are you there again? Okay. Any planning in zoning news? Moving to old business, auto switch for backup generator. Chief?
We'll actually have two bids, but one of the bids is just for the purchase of the switch itself and not for the installation. The other bid is for the switch hand install installation. So I'm asking for the purchase of an automatic transfer switch for our generator to be installed by testing at the amount of $2,100.
Council, what is your desire?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Say.
Been seconded, discussion?
Could you remind us, when you say our generator, what is this generator for?
For the public safety building.
The new, it would be all, or it's part, your existing?
Existing building, correct. And it's basically a switch that makes it automatic, so when the power goes out, it automatically starts it. Right now, we're having to manual start.
And that's why that one was, I mean, that was its original design, it intended was a manual start.
That's correct. $2,100 seems very reasonable for a transfer switch. I don't know, so it's got many switches in, so.
Any further questions?
Well, will this carry the load of the new facility as well once it's constructed?
No, but it will have some.
Okay, so there'll be a completely separate one for that here.
That's correct. Does it carry an automatic switch?
Moving on up. Role call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Motion carry. Next item B is the WAPA authority. Greg?
Been distributed, this carried forward from last meeting. The integrated resource plan was requirement of receiving Western area power for the hydropower. This program or this report covers historical information such as peak load demand, energy sales, customer breakdown, but also talks about current power supply, also things we're looking at in terms of future power supply and how we're moving in that direction. With that, I open it up to questions.
First, how far is your desire, council?
Motion to approve the, what do I need to approve here? Five-year integrated resource plan from Western area power authority.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, and now is that discussion? Questions for Greg?
I've got one here. Just remind me, we're talking about existing power, purchased power resources, Westar. We have the, on your table on page 11 of 23, it's the. Okay, are you there? Yes, can you remind me and everyone else again what the full contract versus the two versus the point three means?
Sure, I'll start with Western area power administration. The two means we have two megawatts under contract for hydropower from them. For Southwestern Power Administration, the point three is for 300 kilowatts of hydropower. And then with Westar Energy, that contract is a full requirement. In other words, they have to, under contract, supply any and all of our other needs that are not met by the other two contracts.
The other two are ahead of the full power though. We can use.
We can.
WAPA and then we can take that against the.
Yeah, correct.
Additional questions for Greg? Reference this agreement?
That's comprised of, you will say until later, but, so going to your spreadsheet that had, I'm trying to find the page on that sheet. There's no page.
On the spreadsheet, they have.
Right after 23 of 23. It's your city of Linsburg value of the WAPA power compared to all Westar. Yes. So going, having this with the WAPA, is it essentially, is it the savings, the difference between the Westar difference?
And the actual cost.
And the actual, so if you subtract the 68.8 from the 171, that's really what we're saving for this agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
So that you're saving?
No. Subtract the 68 from the 171.
Okay.
So I guess.
Need to correct that. Somebody can that form carry through on that spreadsheet. Good catch.
And, okay, sorry, I'm gonna try to correct this out, but two pages later, you've got a table of load factors per month. It's after the.
Upper right-hand corner is.
Is that, maybe I'm just not able to see all that sheet here. Yes, thank you. Turn it this way.
Yes.
No, I'm just, not that it matters, but you look at all the load factors and then you go down to the annual, that's the load factor, 74.9, 76.8, so a lot of high numbers. Then you get to the annual, that's 42.8. And I was just trying to figure out how we get to 42.
Well, because. I know you think that it ought to be high, but it's really based upon, for every kilowatt, there's so many kilowatt hours in a kilowatt. So the 42.8% is actually based upon the 30,000, or I'm sorry, 30,506,000 kilowatt hours, divided into a peak load of 81.39. So the assumption is there.
Highest peak load.
Yes. The assumption is there, because I can't remember off the top of my head how many kilowatt hours are the kilowatt. I didn't remember.
That's okay.
But, so that 42.8% is based upon that.
The 81.39.
8.139. Kilowatts.
That makes sense.
Yes.
I just, it didn't really matter, but I just curious.
Which probably, we've gone up about, almost 3% in our load factor, which is significant because the higher the load factor, the lower your overall cost becomes because the kilowatt is essentially a fixed cost and your kilowatt hour is a variable cost.
And then you do answer that, is what I asked.
Just another indication why we appreciate Greg and his background knowledge in power supply and power wheeling, WAPA, SWAPA, all the other things. Do we have additional questions beyond Cory on this agreement?
I got another one.
That's great.
Our average kilo, our average usage is gradually declining.
Yes, there's.
Is that a result of our energy efficiency programs or what would you attribute that?
Um, I think it's a couple of factors. Energy efficiency, the adoption, energy wise, of greater energy efficiency. Also nationally, you'll see that consumption has leveled off or dropped a little bit. I mean, it hasn't dropped considerably, but when the recession of 2008, it, it really flattened the electricity market and it hasn't rebounded in terms of consumption. So it's those two factors, energy efficiency and just the impact of the recession in 2008. It's a real good commercial, so. Not pure that aren't doing quite as well as everybody.
All right, additional questions? Council Peterson?
I'm done, I'm exhausted. All right, exhausted.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the pull we're here to do. That's good. Other council members, any questions here? We can do this by role call? Craig? Craig?
You do it by her.
What was the? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carry.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes.
Next item of new business is the 2016 audit report. We have given a long term, we're without a ground bear involved here this evening. Welcome, Danielle.
Hi. I'm assuming you all got this in an opinion. I'm gonna go through it kind of quickly then, and if you have any questions, just feel free to ask or stop me. The one I'm gonna start with first is the K-MAG audit. It does probably look different, but the K-MAG audit. And on pages one, two, and three, we do cite Kansas State's law audit accounting. I can make sure you're on the same one. We issued a basically unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting, which is the highest opinion you can receive and basically states that we don't believe there are any material misstatements. You guys do have to accept our audits. This audit is basically cash basis or regulatory basis. The only are rules within this financial statement is accounts payable and income purposes. Otherwise, it's all cash basis. So then if we turn over to page four, this is the financial statement that we're actually issuing the opinion on. It breaks it out by fund. As you can see, your cash increased by 845,000 approximately from prior year. A big chunk of that is because of bond issue happened towards the end of the year and hasn't been spent yet. So you have 545,000, 545,000 with that bond issuance. So that kind of raised your cash from out. Anything in particular on this page that you guys have questions on? Okay, the next several pages, five through 17 are the notes to the financial statements. K-MAG has not come out with really any new votes in particular. The last one that came out was the new capers footnote requirement, which was last year. So I just want to point out a few things. On page five, this year, the audit report is different from last year because we did not actually audit the library and the cemetery. So on page five, we note that we're not auditing those, those are not included in the financial statements. So that is different from every year. And then if you can turn over to page 14, note 17. One of the things that we are required to do by the state is they send us two very lengthy compliance checklists of Canadian statutes, and we have to go through those and verify that those are being met. We did have three this year that were not in compliance, so we have to note them here. So I'm gonna quickly go through those. The first one is, the financial statements have to be published in the paper every quarter, but they only give you 30 days to do it. So we aren't meeting that 30-day requirement, they are being published, they're just not within the 30 days. The other two are in regards to contracts, public work contracts. Anything over 100,000 has to be bonded according to the state. And then they also have to contain a non-discrimination clause, basically saying that they're equal opportunity workers. So those are just two things to add to the contracts. And then on page 15, 16, and 17, this is your long-term debt. I'd just like to show that at the end of the year, you have 8.2 million left of debt to pay. And on page 17, it shows your amortization for that. And I know the city does a good job rehabbing that for you, but it looks like 2034 right now is your last year on the outstanding debt you currently have. On page 18, this is where we compare the budget to what was spent during the year. There were no funds over budget this year. Actually, there was, most of them were, then they come close. So no budget violations for the year. And then the remaining several pages are just the details to each individual fund. There's nothing specific that I'll go over unless you have a question on a fund. And then I can try to dive into those, thank you.
Council member, any questions on specific funds that you wish to talk about tonight?
I'm gonna just kind of quickly go through the other audit report. This is just on your business activity funds, which is basically your utility funds, and I think it's mainly used for your revenue bonds. So I just want to explain the opinion on there, on who we want to, two and three again, that's our opinion letter. On page two, we do qualify the opinion on this one, and I just want to explain why. Basically, in order to not have a qualified opinion, you have to get an actuarial on your other post-employee benefits. And it's very costly, more costly than what your benefit would be out of getting that. So we qualify for that. Other than that, everything is, we don't believe there's any material in the statements and it's an unmodified opinion. And then these financial statements are in more of a format of like a business. They do have, it's not cash basis and it's a cool basis. So the financial statements look more similar to what a business. Any questions on that audit report? Okay. And then last two things are the two letters. As you can probably remember from last year, with it being a new year, we had a lot of recommendations. And the city did a good job cleaning up a lot of those. So a lot of the ones that are left are just some of the smaller ones that carried over from the prior year. We did clean, there's two different letters, a management letter and the governance letter. The management letter is our more, we quote, severe recommendations or recommendations we'd like to see cleaned up first. They did clean up a couple of those this year. The only two left on there is journal entries. The way the software works, they have to do a lot of journal entries. The main thing with journal entries is to make sure there's proper documentation to show the journal entry, not just printing off the journal entry and making sure there's proper approval. So that's the main concern we have. And then the second one is sometimes expenditures go through without coming to you guys first just because of the timing of the expenditures. So we still want to see some sort of listing of a cleanered by company, even if that has to be after that. So that is the other main comment. And then on the governance letter, nothing really new on this one except for K-MAG requires that encumbrances at the end of the year be liquidated completely. And if they're not used for the intended purpose that they were encumbered for, it has to be canceled instead of used for a different purpose. So that was a new recommendation this year. And then we also wanted to put you on notification that GAZI has a new update coming out. And this wouldn't affect the K-MAG audit, but it would affect your business activity funds. If you have any operating leases that are within those funds, you have to capitalize them. It hasn't, an effective date hasn't came out yet, but it is coming down the pipeline. It's just something I want to put out so you don't notice. Any questions?
Question, too many.
He's so nice to me.
I'll go to sleep by the time we get to that.
I powered through it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Recommendation here, you need a motion to approve the audit?
That's acceptable.
Accept the audit, thank you.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the audit as presented and a fine exception that it was. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
All staff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, the JLS from the dent manager position.
The dent manager position for the Sunstrom Conference Center is a non-budgeted position for 2017. Attached to this council agenda item, you'll see a proposed job description for this position, and we are asking for review and approval of this. We're also asking that she would authorize staff to hire a dent manager. This was put together, this was the title of the case of current management.
Are you looking for approval on that tonight? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Council, what is your desire?
To approve.
It's a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second, and now you can ask your questions of all of your grade.
Where would the money come from if on this, we were to hire somebody sooner than later?
Part of it will be from Sunstrom Personnel. Also, some of it from the services contract expense line item. And some of it would have to come from general fund, unencumbered reserves for 2018 and would be budget for the position as part of the personnel expense of the Sunstrom Personnel line item.
What is, are there significant changes in this versus the contract that we've worked under for the last couple of years?
There would be changes as to the life and other responsibilities. We would be looking at the next item that we'll be looking at, our agenda is renew Amy's contract with different terms. To not go into a great deal of detail on that, Amy has asked to sunset out in more than two years. And so we're having to look at how we staff this differently. And currently, with the number of events that we have on the books, it has been very difficult. I think particularly on long weekends or weeks of a lot of hours to staff. So we're looking at how we would staff this position during a lot of the events, management of the events, hosting the events, working with clients to finalize details and ordering their product, ordering their purpose types of things. The contract we have with Amy would be changed to cover more sales and marketing. And it would also be looking at management just a little bit different than we have in current management. Current management doing all of those things.
So this is something that you would expect to work in conjunction with Amy?
Yes.
Not a, oh, we found someone we're gonna replace earlier or anything.
Yeah, it would be.
In conjunction with, so we have both coming at the same time.
To be clear, we have not done as much with sales and marketing as we would like to do, just simply because. do, just simply because the time becomes more and more limited as we grow events. We finished the year out, last year, I wanna say with ninety-three events, and I can't remember off the top of my head. This year, we have between seventy-five and eighty on the books on for this year.
How many hour position do you think this is?
Minimum of thirty.
No, it's about thirty somewhere in here.
Minimum of thirty per week.
And is that, it's a salary position, right?
Yes.
How many you expect them to work?
We have discussed that it would be wise for us to look at this, that it would flex, that we would be flexible with this position in that hour, in the weeks that there were more activities, you'd be working more hours in the weeks that there were not as many activities that you could be looking at your hours.
I think that's important, you set that bar there that they know they may have to work.
Is there additional structure changes that will happen because there's organizational structure need?
We are also, we're looking at putting at least four event hosts in place out of current staff, and so they would be paid a stipend right now to come off the top of our productivity in order to host at least a portion of a long day's event, like a big event such as a wedding reception. They could come in and work maybe the morning hours so that manager would not have to work, you know, sixteen or eighteen hours a day. And then we would look at, we are looking at changing this contract so that this would be a contract additions costly date in addition to any new contracts that we're currently writing that have not been discussed before.
So that background marks, and just a matter of getting all these replaced, we go forward?
Basically, it's approval of what this is that we can replace.
Sure, thank you all.
So really, we could see a return on this investment. You can hire someone who theoretically can have more business coming to the Sunstrom, which will, I would hear.
Does it never hire a return on investment?
Depends on the, for you.
Return on the rest of the year. I feel all of our city employees give a return on our investments.
How about a direct cash return on?
Additional questions, councilmembers? Do you have a motion on the table to approve, Betty?
No.
I thought you had a question.
No, I was just, I appreciate the efforts, first of all, Amy working so closely with Pauline and vice versa, and not giving us a two-week notice or a thirty-day notice so we can have successful transition leadership.
Thank you, that's great work. Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much, and again, thank you for your work on that. Next item is item C, J.O. Management Contract.
Our current contract, as you know from our recent meetings, with yours truly hasn't extended through May the thirty-first, as we wanted to talk about these different options and what we were going to do to put in place a plan to manage the conference center. The proposed agreement that you'll see before you is first facility management of sales and marketing services. Event planning, management, and hosting services are not part of this proposed agreement. The agreement timeframe period is from June the first, twenty seventeen, through December thirty-first, twenty seventeen, and this contract also stipulates that we negotiate for a twenty eighteen contract that we get on to this year. We are asking for you to, after looking at this, approve this contract for management services with yours truly, represented in our building, by any category through the end of this year.
Motion to approve the management contract with yours truly.
It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved to second and discussion. Bill, will you review this contract?
Yes.
This works with city staff?
Yes.
Additional questions for members of our staff? Roll call, please.
Benny?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Again, thank you all very much, appreciate that. Next item, Chris, rises to talk to us about a chipper.
Public Works currently has a nineteen ninety-three Remer chipper. It was budgeted to be replaced in twenty fourteen, been pushed out a few extra years, not being utilized all that much, so we figured we could get a few more years out of it. With the youth that we have in the staff now, we've tried to work a little harder at tree training, and.
It just sounds bad. Those old guys are gone.
Really helpful ones.
Is that a return on investment?
I actually thought it sounded very good.
So reliability with the current one has been an issue over the years, so we decided to go ahead and push forward with replacement. We did submit for three bids, and we got three bids returned. One of those was not exactly to the specs that we were looking for. There are two different styles of chipper, disc style and drum style. The one we have now is currently a disc style. There's a possibility a negative speed of one, but overall, from what I've researched, this seems that the safety is a lot better with a disc chipper. It's less vibration, it throws the chips a whole lot better, and farther, allows us to pack the truck better, which enables us to make fewer trips to dump. So drum style, they call it a chunk and duck, where you throw stuff in, grabs hold of it, and starts whipping it around, so there's some safety issues with that, so.
Bet you're young now.
I'd say I was young, I should be. So we received two bids from Altech and Bandit Industries. And Altech, and both Altech and the Bandit are very similar in design. The Bandit, however, does come with a five-year warranty versus a one-year warranty, which I feel kind of warrants the extra dollars to get that warranty. So my recommendation is to go with a Bandit chipper for three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents.
Thirty thousand or three thousand?
Thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. It's my understanding that this can come from electric and the refuse reserve fund.
Correct.
Well, probably paid for, it's, currently it's half owned by, or half owned by electric department, half owned by Solidway or refuse fund, and the recommendation is to pay the expense of this, half through electric and half through refuse fund.
Council, what is your desire?
Make the motion to recommend the purchase of a, the Bandit wood chipper from Fairbank Equipment, the amount of, not, any amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents.
You've heard a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second and discussion.
Spirit, you may have a little chippy, but.
Chuck and duck. Questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Motion carried, I have one question on the old chipper. I see you're putting it out on Purple Wave. The idea of putting it on Purple Wave?
Yes.
And this is just me off the top, is there any thought of making or figuring out how it could go to the trail people, middle-of-the-trail people, or is that not a good idea? I know they've used ours in the past, and maybe they don't wanna use it because it's, whatever it is, but I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but I'll leave that at staff's hands.
That was just, that was just the first idea for, what it is. One of the issues was reliability, are we giving a gift that keeps on giving? Yeah, I guess that would be one question. I don't know for sure.
Well, if they don't give it to them, they're gonna ask us to check their stuff along the way all the time anyway. I mean, we've done that as a courtesy to the trail, I thought, maybe not, maybe I'm listening to them, but I'm sneaking it from doing it this way, we give it to you, and you, you do your chipping, and Pauline, and whatever, so. Staff can talk about it, I'm not, I'm not chucking duck on that.
I wanna be chippy.
All right, motion carried. Is that a decision, Greg?
No.
Period done, let's start with Chris, Public Works.
Love a whole lot, just still in the transition period, trying to grab a hold of numerous things being thrown at me. I think we've done it fairly well. Big projects coming up. Right now, we've got, three guys are working over on Holson Street, and they're replacing some curb together, and we will, we're supposed to be May eleventh, Impact Share is supposed to be coming in. I contacted him today, and they're about a week behind just because of the weather and stuff, so hopefully sometime the eighteenth or so, they're beginning that process. The electric department has been pretty busy replacing poles all over town. There are two more poles left in the final alley over on McCamley and Roseabout to get that line upgraded with new poles, and replacing a lot of service poles around town, and trying to clean up some service areas that have been kind of issued throughout the years, so they've been busy doing that. Water and wastewater affected today, Benny Walker received promotion to wastewater superintendent, and I've been very pleased with moving him back out to the wastewater plant and how he has grabbed a hold of the whole promotion, and he's doing, doing real well out, so that's been a good move. And Cutler been working real well together. Cutler starts on Thursday, I believe, for wastewater school, the eighteen-week course. So after that point, when he gets to year-end, he should be able to go and get tested and completely confident that he'll pass his test, and will have another certified upgrade out there, so. The other thing coming up for the water, in the course, the water tower, and I'm just trying to begin the process of following up where there are in that timing as far as when that should take place. I know we're waiting on Verizon to get in, to get the power temporary charge set up, and once they get in, I can think of a road forward, so. Kind of where we're at, Public Works, right now.
Chris, what's the schedule on the high lines that are coming in today?
Well, things were good for this week, so they'll start setting some poles.
Do you expect that to go fairly fast?
I expect it to go very fast.
They'll have a base crew here to get it done.
Yeah. The line and poles are already set to Swenson, Brighton, and Vermont, so the weather's gonna play a big factor on this right now, with what they've gotta do, because they've gotta dig and set bolts and stuff. If it was just setting poles, it'd be really easy, but it all depends on what the weather does, so.
Additional questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Thank you, appreciate it.
So I'm gonna take this opportunity to tell the public and city council that it's that time of year again, coming into spring, hopefully the patch fall or rain, maybe not all of it, but most of it, to start cleaning up the properties, all the near yards, keeping them, everything's cleaned up. We've kind of slowed down a little bit at the police department here in the last week or so, so started officers to go out and start doing some code enforcement, checking properties for junk and trash and tall grass. There are some that we tend to manage every year for people, and then there are others that don't take very much persuasion to be able to clean up. We have had several complaints in the southwest portion of the city, so we'll be concentrating first on quite a few properties in that area. But I just wanted to kind of give everyone a heads up that we will be doing that. Normally, we work on complaints a lot, but we're gonna be out of time for the next couple months, so I just wanted to make everyone aware.
Tim, is there a mowing ordinance about mowing clippings into the street and causing Chris issues later on, and that's something that we should remind our citizens about?
Yeah, we have an ordinance that kind of falls into clippings going into the street. The biggest issue we have, clippings in the street, Chris, could probably follow up with on this, is that they tend to clog up the sewer and.
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer, and cause additional costs for the city, we'll get people to clean them out.
Other questions for Chief? Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm gonna start with the Sunstrom this evening, we have nine events on the day full. March through July, only one weekend does not have an event, which is Memorial Day weekend. And currently, there are only three of those events that are for less than two hundred guests, so we were looking for smaller events. I think very different from what we anticipated when we first opened the conference center. We were thinking we'd do some smaller meetings, and we didn't know quite how these larger events would go, and we continue to just book more and more of this. Again, currently we have seventy-five to eight events booked for the twenty seventeen year. As far as I can mention, the Service Bureau goes, and we, I just finished editing and adding some information to an article for Triple A Magazine. They contacted us and wanted to do a big-sized article on Linsborg, which was a fantastic thing for us. Midwest Living also contacted me this past week, and then working on them with information for cheap articles. Midwest Living ads for us are over four thousand dollars, which we cannot do, so anytime they do an article on Linsborg, it is a huge gift to us, and it's, it's much more than advertising would be on editorial. Currently, I'm receiving about six to twelve leads per week from Midwest Living, best of the Midwest advertising that we did. You'll remember, we had one issue that Midwest Living puts out that is an annual issue that talks about travels throughout the Midwest, and I didn't know if this would be a great thing for us. I thought it would be a good thing, but I wasn't certain. Our return off of this has been good, but the best part of it, they went ahead and constructed editorial about Linsborg in this year's issue, which I did not expect to possibly happen until next year, so I feel like it was a very good purchase for us. I am frustrated at times that so much of it is pay-to-play, but that's just the way it is, and so we have to look at how we spend our dollars wisely. You probably noticed you did not receive a Friday report from me on Friday because I had this great idea that I would be typing this out as I worked with an event at Somerton South Middle School. And it did not work out that way from the time I got there. We had a fifteen-minute break for lunch, and that was all we had the entire day. And over that break, I found out that they do not pass out their Wi-Fi password to anyone who this is named in school, so I have no way to, to write a report. But I passed out almost nine hundred cookies to one of these students and staff, and talked to them about Linsborg. It was a wonderful event, and I'd like to do it again if they do it, it was their festival of cultures. It was the first time they have done this, and they brought in all of their students with different ethnic backgrounds and Linsborg, and allowed us to present information about our heritage, and so we were able to present, and I thought it was chuckle because the Hispanic girls did dance and flavors from Mexico, and they had just a variety of Native Americans and Asian, you know, these different things. And then here I am, I'm on street presenting, you know, something that I've learned about, and I just learned to live, I guess, in the midst of it, and I, and I was one of, so it kind of made me chuckle a little.
Oh, you were.
I know. This is the last Kansas Hamper Festival that's this coming weekend, it's a little bit of a sad thing. I think that we will come out of this okay, I think a lot of smaller communities are really gonna feel a crunch from this, because this is the only time in here they really get to do a big promotion in their community. We're very fortunate in Linsborg that we have advertising banners that we're able to use, yeah, most of these communities just simply don't, they don't have the permission of the Service Bureau, they have volunteers that maybe work part-time, and that's the other. We will be doing something fun this year for our last year, we're going to be passing out flowers. We will be doing something fun this year for our last year, we're going to be passing out flower seed packets. And I was not able to purchase these having them professionally done. So I was able to find a company out of Overland, Kansas that put together a native wildflower seed mix for us that actually was planted this past fall in Port On Heights to help reclaim some of the ground that was damaged during reconstruction of the castle and of the restroom facilities. So they planted wildflower seed last fall. And they mixed the same mix for us this spring and volunteers and community packages for us in little envelopes and fixed a business card at the front, so they look like little seed packets. So we will have about 2,000 of those going out to guests with the ask that they come back to Port On Heights to plant the seed for us wherever they want to on Port On Heights. We were very conscientious when we asked for the seed, that if the seed that was not going to cause trouble with the the pasture land around here, that it would not harm cattle in any way, or it would take over as a noxious seed. So they guaranteed us that that would not happen, so that's the guarantee we have for them. But anyway, those are the things we have going on. Any questions?
Cory, you have a question?
Yeah, back on the Sunstrom, when we have the groups of two, 300 people here now on a fairly regular basis, do you have any idea of the percentage of those conference or event attendees that come to us from outside of Lindesford versus from within?
Almost all.
Almost all from outside of Lindesford?
Yeah. I, I can only count just a few Lindesford residents that are using the Sunstrom. Most of our business is from downtown.
I just think that's a good number to tally at the end of the year.
A lot of the biting business is looking, like if you can get in a friend group of girls, then all their friends follow. So that's a whole group.
That's marketing, it's not real marketing, you know that.
True. Additional questions for Paula? Thank you, Paula. Appreciate it very much. Any others, council members? Others? No others, what is your desire?
Motion to adjourn?
Move. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Two seconds.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you very much. Thank you, public, for being here. Thank you for watching on Channel 13.